It's a holiday. We're good there. The other one is the one we want. That's why we brought it out early this morning. I got to come down and sleep. Sorry, I don't have some battery in it. And nobody told my daughter that she was not awake at all.
Nobody told Mike to get up.
I know.
All right, here we go. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Go ahead, Bob.
I applied a little bit of snow, mainly because it was icy. Those festivals are gravel pit up and they've gone. Hopefully Jason's working on that permit to expand that pit. Kind of doing some fall stuff to get ready for winter. Blading a few roads, getting ready.
Been out of the office the last two weeks. I had two back-to-back conferences. Had four H Awards Day on Sunday. And then this week it's just going to be finishing up my Western Extension Risk Management Education Grant for the Emergency Response to Accidents and Holding Lives, our trailer. And then getting our invitation for the Stockman Association meeting sent out. On December the 16th, I'll have a board training with Dan Clark now at the fairgrounds. So if anybody has a board, please let them know. But he does a really good job to be an effective board member. Open meeting law board training. It'll be December the 16th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the 4-H building. Yep, yep, December.
Maybe we'll send it up.
Yep, yep, I'll have a flyer sent out later this afternoon.
Well, no, I'm saying we have like lots of awards and we kind of train before when Sidney Decker was here. Where we have all like the fire district boards, so we're all of them, invited all of them to it.
Yeah, I'll work on getting my flyers sent out though. But that's all I got.
No repeat for that?
No.
I'll give a report for the landfill first. They got, well, literally over the Labor Day weekend. And one of us had some other kind of a failure, maybe a fuel pump or nozzles or something like that. And it stuck hell, so they're taking up a ton of that mix in the pit. They lost a main hydraulic hose on a compactor the other day that on Saturdays. They have a bunch of the project equipment. They finished crushing all those cars and I took right through their... I don't know what they just made sure that, you know, the oils and a lot of the other masses. And then DBQ is going to be down here on the way with them, of course. And then there's some things we saw a waste that afternoon. Far as my... Kind of back into the normal stuff, not too many permits coming in, but still above shelter. There are going on that I'm managing and independent system.
I signed in Kentucky. We had gotten several boarding issue. And so finally since August, I sent over the coffee pot stuff out of the break room. In the break room. It's a Zach Sabbath, it's a rock concert. All... And then we found out that it actually ended up being the PVC that connected to the old... ...type and craft. And in that part, we realized there are no longer any threads. On Saturday and then yesterday I was in fixing the bathroom toilet in the public bathroom. It needs to float, so...
I can say that when she's not standing here. I've had bumps on my head before.
It's gonna be a short week for me. I have a...
Remember?
Dropped off a couple machines.
Thank you.
We worked hard on Jackson gravel pit last week. I got some of the PBX system that's... It's gonna be obsolete next year. We're gonna... Yep, yep, people see what they can provide. We're trying to cut costs on it, it's really expensive too, so... That's always fun. Other than that, that's about it.
I'm still proposing, we talked a little bit more to Mako and their Carley King and their whole computer system. The sheriff didn't hear that. Unisource, I know they talk this kind of stuff here. We need to talk to some other counties that got involved. Broadwater, Fergus. The amount of money they claim they're saving counties to get into a system that they're managing just like... What darn guy's doing it is unreal. We need to look at it seriously, not just for costing, but effectiveness and everything else involved with that thing. What they're doing to Unisource, we've been finding out just on the sheriff piece of this. This needs to be looked at.
They were pretty good. They, you know, Mako farms it out to a third-party objects. They were doing pretty good at that, but they dropped the ball lately. They are not... You know, so...
Go ahead.
Staying busy, Margot and I've got everything kind of divvied up. Cody's caseload. We all have a bunch more coming in all the time. No applications yet for our new position. I have promoted Margot to chief deputy. Just because I want to keep her around because she's really good at her job. And so this week be working on response to a writ of mandamus that was filed regarding a decision the election administrator made a while back. And try to get ahead of that. We've got 21 days to respond to that, but want to get ahead of it because you never know what's gonna fall. Lapse, so... Yep, happy to... Got some time this week, meet up with everybody and touch base with everybody. I'll just be kind of making the rounds. Meeting tonight. Keep everything rolling. Anything else? Anybody else? Thanks guys, have a good week.
Thank you.
I had a healthy time sleeping.
And why, why are you not paying silver drivers again?
We are.
You are?
Didn't we?
Yeah. Why is it on the agenda at 1:30?
It's not paying them, it's clarification, reimbursement clarification. But no, they approved the invoice to pay them last week.
Okay. Does there complain about that too, 1:30?
I did see that, but it was like the same day or a day after the invoice.
So they'll shut up now.
Yeah.
They won't take their stub off. They won't take their stub off. But they'll shut up now.
Don't be, don't be so calm.
Well, about that, they'll shut up about that.
All right. Chamber of Credit.
Hi. So we had a successful Halloween fall rest just a few weeks ago, so that was really good. Probably had about 400, 500 people there. Got rid of 400 corn dogs. So that's my count. And I had 800 friendship bracelets, but still have a few of those left for next year. So anyway, that's good, but it was a great event and gosh, it's always so fun to see all the little kids. Everybody gets so excited about the weather once again held out for us, so that was great. We continued to have, we had a business after hours at Stocktoberfest last Thursday, so that was very successful. We had about 50 people there, so that was great. We got stuck to, or an after hours this Thursday at Atomic 79, so they're going to have Atomic 79 prizes. So that will be very fun and a good, and the back bar will be open. So it should be a nice way to network and visit with other people on Thursday from 5 to 7. And so yeah, that's all exciting. Let's see, and then the next thing is the parade of lights on December 5th. So County, County Courthouse, can we count on the county to light the tree out front here? And I've already arranged for Santa, talked to Santa, and he's all set to be here that night. He's arriving on the fire truck like he always does. And going to be lighting the tree with a child there at the crowd. And teen tones from the high school will be there singing Christmas carols on the courthouse steps. So everything kind of just like has been, yeah, just the same. So that, the big difference here, and I'll underscore it, we had the difference last year is according to the city ordinance, we're not allowed to throw candy from floats. According to our insurance, we are absolutely not allowed to throw candy from floats. It, it endangers children. They, candy gets out on the street, a float runs over it, a kid is scared because the candy got crashed, they run out to get it and they get hit. And I had, when I was a child in Indiana, a 16-year-old friend of mine was, his head was crushed by a tractor tire in a float, in a homecoming float. So deaths of children do happen during floats. And it's because they're throwing candy from the float and candies all over the street and it attracts kids. So the way we fix that is we have volunteers handing the candy to the kids and try to keep everybody on the sidewalk. Try to keep all spectators on the sidewalk. No children should be in the street running around. It's dark, it could be snow and it could be ice, who knows? It is just a recipe and our insurance doesn't allow it anyway. So, and neither does the city ordinance. So that will be, I'll be leaning into that a lot on the posters and some of the messaging that I send out just to make sure people know those are the rules. I'm pretty flexible with a lot of stuff, but I wouldn't be flexible with that.
Especially if you've seen one.
He was a friend of mine, he was right down, his, their farm was two or three farms away from our farm. They were friends, we used to hang out with him. His name was Robbie. And he was 16, he absolutely knew better, but he got down and he was reaching right there between the front, those are tractor tires that were close together in the front, I don't know what they call those. And he was reaching down and the big gloves of the big tire grabbed his hood, rolled him under and crushed him. It was horrible. And it was going like 10 miles or maybe five miles, it was going so slow. Which was awful, but it doesn't matter, it's just like a farming accident and we all know those happen. So, so anyway, enough about that. On to other good news, if you will. My last day with the chamber will be December 14th, or not, November 14th. I've accepted the job of the executive director position for the Barrett Hospital Foundation. Marion Nicholas has chosen to step aside, have been here to do some things with family. And it's just going to take her away and, you know, do some traveling. So, so I've decided to go for that position. I think it'll be a great position. I'll be getting back into fundraising, which is what I've done before. I really had never done chamber work before. I knew what chambers are supposed to do, but this was all just a big experiment. So I'll be getting back into planguing and fundraising as a professional development officer. So that'll be really good, I think. And I'm looking forward to it. I think it'll be a fun change. I feel like I brought the chamber as far as my little brain can bring it. It, it really could go a lot more into digital marketing and with AI, it could really go into a lot of different things. And quite frankly, I don't need to go there.
Well, I told you, you've done a remarkable job of bringing it from where it was to where it is today.
Well, my pleasure.
You say you don't go to chamber work, you did well. I think it's tough to replace that position.
It will be, I think I'm going to post it this morning out on Indeed and get that posted and see if you can't get somebody. I mean, we've got a lot of new people who've entered the area, so there might be a marketing professional, a fundraising professional, somebody like that, that would be really helpful. Because that's what, that's the skill set this will face, is marketing or fundraising. Probably more in the marketing and sales than anything. But, but it's been a pleasure. This will be my last update with the aw, unless you want me to come back and give you an update.
Your choice. Just hold in and put yourself on the agenda.
Well, you never know, we might have some giant donor coming and giving us a bunch of money that's going to do something with the county.
You can thank him.
Or her. But thank you so much for your indulging me and hearing me in these last five years. Can you believe it's been five years? This was my sixth Halloween Fall Fest, so it's been a lot of fun, you guys. And I've really enjoyed each and every one of you, so thank you.
Thank you. And do I do? I'm sure.
And the parade of lights will continue to go on, the board is committed to that, so just don't worry that I'm not there. It will go on. And I, I may be back and volunteer to run the parade just because I know how to do it.
We aren't worried about that.
I might be volunteering, I'm still hearing the order.
You, you actually changed your cell phone number.
I still have my Kentucky number.
Stay there.
Thank you.
Yep. Yep, thank you all very much.
I don't know what going on in the city, just staying real grind, lawsuits. And planning for next summer, it should go through our Street and Alley Committee, but what we did on the Oriole Thompson, Kentucky, that seal coat, we're going to plan on doing Montana, Idaho, Washington and Pacific next year from Atlantic to the end of them. Biggest thing is if you see kind of potholes or things that need to be fixed before they do it, kind of let us know, major potholes. Going to be a big push out there to get the people to clean the gutters out, get the weeds out of them. That was last year, it was our biggest downfall, we couldn't get, we didn't have enough help, even hiring a few extra kids to get the gutters cleaned in time. So going to try to get the landowners to do that. And if that all goes well, next year we'll do east and west from here all the way to the end, so this side of the town will be finished. Over the big project for next year so far, so. A lot else going on, hopefully by Wednesday night we'll have a new chief of police.
How's that work? You appoint, they got it approved, or you already appointed, they got it approved?
Yeah, they're supposed to be, I appoint them, they approve them. The last one, they wanted to go out, send it out, and we got one application in, decided these are the two we have to start with. He had three years of MP, and that's all his military police. So really, they decided, if he didn't even meet any minimum qualifications, we were down to the other two that we had before. And so they just said, we're going to fill what Dole is. Then we'll have a new full-time police officer, Lees, has put his year in, so he'll be a full-timer. Probation. North City is kind of creeping through the, they're preferred the Windland Project or the West Side Edition. Got everything pushed through, this, we have a resolution to approve the funds and set the fund lines in our budget. So hopefully next summer they will pay for that over there, so that'll be. Yep, pretty much. Both have another cop car coming in, but it's on the assembly line of the one that they got the grant for, have wrapped. Just been kind of a two steps forward, one back, it seemed like that car all the, eventually that will be in town.
Thank you guys.
Nothing else, unless you have other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you there.